Let's begin. Hello, everyone. My name is Lloyd Alban. I'm a reporter with the Malpea Speed and like I'd like to welcome everyone to our 2020 election candidate forum for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors for District Three. Our co-sponsors for tonight are Silicon Valley at Home and California Yimby. And our candidates for tonight going for the District Three seat for the County Board of Supervisors are current Assembly Member from District 25, Canton Chu, and former Sunnyvale Mayor Otto Lee. So a few things before we begin. Each candidate will get two minutes to reply to these questions that we have compiled. And each candidate will also get one minute for an opening statement. Also, we, audience will have an opportunity to submit questions through our Q and A feature a little bit later in our forum. And once again, this form is being video recorded. And recording of this form will be provided after the form to registrants. It will also be made available online via our Action Fund website and Facebook page. So once again, welcome, everyone. Welcome candidates. And yeah, let's thank you for being here. And yeah, let's get started with one minute for our opening statements. And we are going to start with Assembly Member Chu.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Lloyd, and thank you for having me here. I hope everyone and your loved ones are healthy, safe. And a little introduction, trying to do it in one minute. I am a recent immigrant. I came to the United States, come to California as a graduate student with two luggage full of textbooks. With not a lot of money in my pocket. I didn't come with my family wealth. I came as an adult. So it was very, very honored to be elected to serve on the various school board and San Jose City Council and now serving you as the State Assembly, representing District 25 by serving the 40 million of California. And the reason that I decided to come home and run for county supervisor has nothing to do which position is higher, which position is lower. It's just because I feel that coming back home, I can use my 30 years of public services experiment and focus on things that are really important to our neighborhood. Time up. I didn't see that time clock. Should I go by the time clock? But anyway, you know, a lot of things I think will be able to accomplish locally and then propagate through the state and making a big impact, not just for the county of Santa Clara, but throughout California. Thank you. Your timer is working?
It's working. Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it on the screen, so maybe going over apologizing.
That's all right. We'll get that fixed. Mr. Lee, I have, we'll give you a minute and a half.
Oh, did I take a minute and a half? Wow, sorry.
All right, Mr. Lee.
Thank you for staying at home, for hosting another forum again, and also for Yimby for your good work. I'm Otto Lee. I'm a father of three girls. I'm an immigrant, intellectual property attorney, and also a 20-year Navy veteran. I served eight years on Sunnyvale City Council, including a term as the Green Mayor in one of America's 10 safest cities. I served in Iraq to help bring our troops home and was awarded the Bronze Star. I've dedicated my life to serve the public, to improve our community. And now I'm ready for supervisors to solve these problems. Our rising homelessness, the ridiculous housing costs, unsafe neighborhoods, and try to reopen our economy after COVID safely. We need to provide affordable housing for our seniors, our teachers, our students, our at-risk families, and of course, veterans who have served and protected us. I'll fight the increased mental health services so that people living on streets can get the care they so desperately need. Now lead efforts to reduce pollutions, improve public transit, including electrifying Caltrain, BKA buses, and also working on emergency preparedness like fire and earthquake and to strengthen our BMC healthcare system. This is not just another political job, but it's personal to me because these are very serious challenges that will affect our kids' future. I'm honored to say I'm the unique candidate endorsed by both the SVO, the Labor, and all the different organizations, including the nurses, the firefighters, and our teachers. Our list, of course, also include amazing folks like Nomenada, the Los Corta. And you can go to my website, ottolee.org, to take a look. And again, at the end of the day, we really need to work hard together to fix these problems. And we will. And thank you so much for hosting this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We're going to move on to our questions now, which will cover everything from affordable housing to the pandemic and the economy and a few more topics. So we're going to alternate each question between both of you. Mr. Lee, you went last. So we give you the first question right here. You're going to have two minutes on the timer there. And your question is, "The county has begun soliciting input from the community to inform its plans on re-envisioning the Reed Hillview Airport site in East San Jose, one of several major county-owned parcels. What is your vision for the site and do you support building mixed-use housing on it?"
Yeah, thank you for the questions. Retailville has been discussed as a potential site for plans in the future. And I think it's something that we do need to look at. The way it works for Retailville is that being a FAA-funded location, whenever the county receives funding from the FAA, then for at least the next 10 years, you cannot really close the airport. You have to be able to keep it remaining as an airport. And that's one of the reasons why I believe the county in 2018 has decided to not accept funding from the FAA in order to have that sunset process to get started. In addition, the county has directed staff to Harry Freitas Group is doing a very long, big study into the alternative usage of what retail could be for the future if the airport were to close. I think it's a long-term planning that's very much needed. And of course, if the airport were to have been closed, then one of our biggest needs in our community, of course, is housing. And if we're going to build any housing, whether infill or not, we really need to make sure affordable housing is a strong part of our housing stock because we are not building enough housing for seniors and students that I've mentioned earlier. The idea of building high is not something that I'm afraid of. I've talked to people since I was born in Hong Kong. This is immigrant. To me, high density is not three, four stories. High density, I'm familiar with more like 20, 30 stories. And I think there are right places where this type of housing will be needed because our challenges for housing is so scary. And not just talking about the homeless situation on the streets right now, just in terms of regular employed individuals cannot afford housing, both for purchase and for rent is not acceptable. So thank you for asking the question and we have a lot more to work on clearly. Thank you.
Mr. Chu.
Well, thank you. Now you know a little bit of history about the Reed Hillfield. And I would just want to answer your question, you know, point blank. Yes, I do support closing of the Reed Hillfield. But what are we going to do afterward, close it? And that I would definitely have to get your community input. I would have a task force to study all the feasibility of how best use that piece of property. And we might need to reserve a piece for the emergency relief or firefighters use. And I would be looking, working with the San Jose State University, trying to relocate their little campus there to Martha Field. And I talked to Fred, the director, and they actually preferred to have their little aviation school in Martha Field. And for emergency relief, I think by 2030, the drone technology will be so advanced. I don't think we need a long runway, you know, a 200-acre piece of land. But how we're going to go develop, I would definitely get the input from all those stakeholders. I'm also hoping that we'll be able to connect the live rail from Allen Rock Station to East Ridge. Because as an Assembly Member, I have allocated and fought for the funding to finish the live rail to East Ridge via aerial connection. And because I don't want to create any additional traffic on Capitol Avenue after we develop Reed Hillfield Airport. So thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next question regarding housing. Last year, Stanford withdrew their updated general use permit application, citing difficulties in negotiations with the county, especially regarding their housing and affordable housing requirements. What would your approach be to bringing Stanford back to the table to ensure they are planning for their housing and affordable housing needs?
Definitely, we'll definitely will engage the conversation with Stanford. You're talking about the low-income housing. I'm also concerning about the traffic. So I think that there's something that we need to work out what's best for Stanford and what's best for Santa Clara County and the existing neighborhood around there. Again, you know, the traffic congestion is a concern of mine because if you got stuck in the traffic, you know, with a gasoline engine car, you are really blowing a lot of CO2 emission to the environment. I'm happy that the yesterday or day before yesterday, the governor signed the executive order to ban selling of gasoline engine car by in 2035. That was a bill that Phil Ting and I worked on it in the State Assembly for a while. And we never be able to take it off the ground. But the governor stepped in to assign the executive order. I think it's a good thing. So continue a negotiation, bring them up to the table and work out something that best for everybody is really my goal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yes. It is unfortunate to me to see that Stanford withdrew the GUP general use permit application from the county, which really is a 16-year expansion plan that would add 2.3 million square feet of academic buildings and 3150 additional housing units, affordable housing units on Stanford own land. It is unfortunate because of the fact that it is obviously a huge additional add to the affordable housing stock. One of the problem with that plan that has was that Stanford is doing some double counting of saying that they were adding 933 of those of the market rate, which is great, but it's something that they already were building at the same time. I think we need to bring Stanford back to the table. I think it is absolutely important to make sure that Stanford is providing these housing units, both for the faculty, staff, and for the students as well because they are a huge part of our county on the north part of Santa Clara County. It's right now, I would say, the withdrawal is a bit surprising at the time, but I don't believe it's the end of the discussion of this because as much as Sanford needs to build these housing for the students and staff, this is something that is a win-win situation that we could work with. So I believe it's just a temporary halt on the long negotiation of this plan because Stanford needs to expand. Of course, we need to work together with Stanford to come up with a final plan. So as far as publicly right now, the plan that's withdrawn, I fully believe that this is not the end of the discussion on this. As an attorney in my private life, we have gone to litigation and many type of issues. And oftentimes, the difficult times and the two sides are not talking to each other was just the beginning of working harder to come up with a solution. So I truly believe that we'll get back to the negotiating table with a better plan at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going, we have your section, rapid fire section. You can get 30 seconds on the clock to answer the following questions about the different props there on the ballot in November. Mr. Lee, I believe you went last, so 30 seconds or less. Do you support Prop 15, also known as the schools and community first?
Strong supporter, early supporter of Prop 15. Split row of property taxes is long overdue for the taxable to be closed. And that is actually 92% of the funding will be only paid for 10% of the lost property owners. So this is something that we really need. It would bring $250 million to Santa Clara County alone yearly with the Prop 15 funding. So that's the reason why I'm a strong supporter of Prop 15 for our schools and our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chu, 30 seconds.
Yes, definitely. I was an early supporter of Prop 15. And I think especially during this COVID time that this state budget, when we started the session, we're expecting $15 billion surplus. When we ended the session was $55 billion shortfall. So anything that will be able to help out with our community and school is what I would definitely support.
And, and Mr. Chu, we're going to stick with you for this next one. Do you support Prop 16, which repeals the state ban on affirmative action, Prop 209?
I'm neutral on that. You know, I took the vote. I didn't take, take sides when it came to the Assembly floor. And this issue we have been talking about in the legislature since 2013, when Dr. Hernandez introduced ACA 5. I believe the solution, which we actually, I worked with Kevin DeLeon, the Senate Pro Ten, to every year allocate $10 million for the low-income scholarship. The reason I didn't support Prop 16, ACA 5, is because there's no money in there. You know, there is an income disparity. It is the biggest, the largest barrier to equal assets. You know, if you're serving those people and a lower income, not every family can afford $30,000 in tuition to send their kids. Oh, sorry. Your timer wasn't working. It was not counting down.
We'll get that fixed. Prop 16, yes or no?
Yes, strong supporter of Prop 16, being a student who went through UC Hastings through the LEAP affirmative action program. It truly is an equalizer that helps me get through school. Affirmative action is not about funding. Affirmative action is about equal opportunity. I'm afraid that my opponent doesn't understand it or is lying about his position because in Chinese media, so I just want to make it very clear. This is an issue that we clearly differ. And this is something to highlight the issue of racial justice. And this is what I'm fully supportive along all the Bay Area legislators that I know in the Assembly is supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to next one, Mr. Lee. Your position on Prop 21, which grants local governments greater flexibility to expand rent control ordinances?
Thank you. I am in support of the concept, but now because of the fact that Assembly Chu has already passed AB, let me get the number, AB 1482 as a state law. It is already state law whereby state is not, landlord is not able to raise rent by more than 5% plus inflation. So right now, I believe rent control is the law of land. And I certainly believe that is something that has been acceptable to not to everybody, but I think it's now the law that has been carried out. So thank you.
Mr. Chu.
Let me talk about Proposition 16 a little bit. You know, at the state legislature, we don't want to have a mandate without funding. The Proposition 16 is really an issue of those who have and who have not. My opponent has already dumped $362,000 as of June 30th, you know, for the primary election. And he definitely be able to send those kids to school for $30,000 a year. But the people that I want to advocate for does not have that financial ability. So it is because there is a prize, a dollar sign to those bills. And, and yes, I do support the proposition of what, 22, 21?
22.
22, thank you.
Mr. Lee, you know, your name was mentioned, I think. Maybe 30 seconds for rebuttal?
Oh, he mentioned my name. So, so can I have 30 seconds to? You can give me 30 more seconds?
We'll give you 30 seconds each.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Yeah. So you know, we have California, we have, I'm sorry.
Start with Mr. Lee and then we'll go with you.
Oh, okay.
So Prop 16 to me is an issue of equal opportunity. It applies to not just race, applies to gender as well. It's not just about higher education, it's about jobs and also about hiring and contracting. The number of jobs not being offered to ethnic minorities is significant, especially even contracting area, over 97% of San Francisco contracts, for example, are given to non-minorities. So I think these are the issues that we need to fight on. And it's not a matter of funding. It's about opportunity for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Chu, 30 seconds.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, the, I pivot it on the college education, higher education because education is the biggest equalizer. We need to, this might go to definitely make sure that those immigrant family, this disadvantaged family also have a chance to have, go to the the best college in California. You know, it's like we have an equal housing, but only for those people that can afford the housing. We still have so many homeless people. So I want to make sure, make sure that underserved people also have an equal opportunity.
Thank you. We are going to move on to our last rapid-fire question. Do you support Measure RR or Measure RR to fund Caltrain operations? Mr. Chu, you went last, so we're going to hand it to you.
For me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm actually still pondering on that. You know, I've been a strong supporter for transportation project. But the state has provided a lot of funding to electrifying the Caltrain. Actually, we're in, we're putting a halt on the high-speed rail to remove some of the funding to the, to the rail system in Caltrain.
Five seconds.
So this time, one is of the sales tax I'm still debating on.
Mr. Lee, 30 seconds on Measure RR?
Yes, Measure RR Railroad, the sales tax for trains is very important to, for the survival of Caltrain. As Caltrain is supported by San Mateo, San Francisco, and Santa Clara Counties funding with the lower ridership right now, about which I don't think Caltrain would actually survive. So therefore, I think it's absolutely crucial that we support it. As much as I'm against most of that, this is really one of those crucial times that would be needed for our Caltrain to succeed and survive this tough period. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to, to the timer, back to two minutes for these next few questions. Mr. Lee, I believe you went last. This one's on transportation. Transportation is our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. Research shows that expanding capacity for vehicles increases driving miles. Do you support redirecting funding from highway and expressway expansion to funding transit service?
Yes, you're absolutely right about the greenhouse gas situation. I myself drive a Tesla. I'm very fortunate to have those solar panels above me in the roof. And we do have some Tesla walls. And so I get to tell people that I have zero emission because I'm able to drive by the sunshine generated my roof the day before. So on battery and charger overnight. Really is the way to go is to be electric and, and gas cars. As the governor has said, 2035, California should no longer have gas cars. I think that is a really bold but necessary statement because we don't need tomorrow's technology. Today's technology is exactly what we need. So I think that's really important. As far as our funding of public transportation, I think that is something that we really need to increase. And I'm very much against this fear box recovery. Keep talking about lowering the number of bus lines or increasing the fear of the VTA. That to me does not make any sense. At the end of the day, for successful public transportation program system to work, we need to learn from big cities where the fear is lower and they really be able to pack those trains and buses. I understand there's some COVID concerns right now, but obviously COVID will be gone someday. But these traffic jam won't be, as many of us have always experienced. There's some traffic is starting to come back. So I think it is so important to make sure that we are directing our funding for more option for public transportation and keeping people into, making people easier to ride the bus, take the VTA trains. It's sickening to see two or three people on the VTA train or the double 22 buses when we know that people are not taking it because of other issues because no gas is quite cheap and $5 or round trips, sometimes it's cheaper to drive. We need to lower the cost of public transportation, making it freely available to seniors or even students as well. This is how we could get people to take public transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Chu, 30 seconds, or two minutes, excuse me.
Okay. Well, I cannot afford a Tesla, so I'm driving a Prius. You know, this is the half and then the half not, you know. But definitely to answer your question, I do support moving the money for way, highway or expressway expansion to public transit. You know, when we passed SB 1, we specifically saying that we put a lockbox on it to say those money were only for the repair of the bridges and the road. We cannot use the money to build any additional car lanes. And when I, when I spearheaded the North San Jose Neighborhood Plan, which by the way, it received the California Planning Association's award. You know, we wanted to also develop a complete street, you know, make it easier for those people who like to ride a bicycle to work, also walk or jog to work. So a complete street design is definitely important. Talking about bus services, you know, VTA, you know, have a lot of the structure, I think, would need to be reconsidered, you know, based on the grand jury report. You know, there's a lot of part-time council members on the board to go by different regions. You know, the part-time council member, you know, they, they have a full-time job. They need to work to make money and also attending their important work in their city. And so some of them, according to the grand jury report, not even ready when they go out to the VTA meeting. So the structure of the board also need to be considered and to make this VTA a more vibrant government agency.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move to a couple of questions on the pandemic and pandemic related issues. So as both of you know, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors recently, last month, turned down a sales tax increase to, to fund general safety net services. And question is, would you support a similar increase if you're elected on the board? Mr. Chu?
Yeah, the, the timing is important. You know, at this time, that's business are really suffering, not, not just the business. Everybody is suffering. So I don't know, this is the right time to, to increase the sales tax. And just regarding to this pandemic, I think we really, really need to rely on our big Uncle Stan in the Washington DC. I think the Trump administration felt, failed us terribly. You know, make it the state very, very difficult to respond to this crisis. As we are still learning the, about experiencing this pandemic, we definitely need to rely more on the Uncle Sam in the federal government because they, they can print money. And as the state and the county, we have to because they can print money, and as the state and the county, we have to balance our budget. So I, at this point, you know, when I see the reopening of, before I see a fully recovered economy, I probably will not support any additional sales tax increase.
All right. Mr. Lee?
So you're on mute. All right. Try this again.
Leave your.
Okay, how was that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. As I said earlier regarding sales tax, I do believe the sales tax is in general regressive, and it actually hurts the folks who most that are spending paycheck to paycheck, because everything they buy would be likely subject to the sales tax impact of it. The proposal that the Santa Clara County has just rejected actually was for about five eight cents, I believe, which is a very significant amount as well. So I am cautious to say that this is not something that, and in this case, I do think the timing as well is very difficult with the COVID period. So given the significant impact to low-income individuals and the poor economic conditions, certainly the sales tax is something that I don't think will pass as part of the reasons. I don't think people are willing to be doing that, passing the tax measure at this difficult time. And the additional revenue certainly is needed, and certainly I'm very supportive of looking at the large wealth disparity we have in this county. When you have Google, Facebook, Apple, Intel, these huge, you know, literally billions, hundreds of billion dollar companies, we need to make sure that we are talking to them, whether for them to come up with more funding. It's exciting when Google or Apple was talking about, oh, we'll put one billion, we'll put two billion for housing. I think it's exciting. I really think we need to hold their feet to the fire and be working very close to them to make sure that they actually are putting the money where the mouth is and that we are building, building the housing. Because at the end of the day, the housing crisis partly is because of the fact that they are doing so successfully, hiring so many employees from all around the country who work in this valley, but they are not putting in the housing along with it. So I think there's a huge gap there, where larger companies can really be like big help of creating this housing that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. And there goes two minutes for this next question, or sorry, with you, Mr. Lee. As of September twentieth, twenty twenty, there were a total of twenty thousand five hundred eleven COVID-nineteen cases and a total of two hundred ninety-six related deaths. The data clearly indicates black and Latinx residents are disproportionately affected. How should the county address the racial inequities in public health for black and Latinx communities?
Those are very sombering statistics, over twenty thousand cases and two hundred ninety-six deaths. These are not something that we could say is just a number, not only because of the fact that it is our neighbors. We also could see from the statistics that four zip codes on the east side of San Jose has most of these deaths and COVID cases, and you're absolutely right, that Latinx and African-Americans, even some Asian-American communities have been very much devastated due to the important work that they do. Many of them has to go to work, many of them essential workers in the health field, but also fast food restaurant, I mean, areas that they cannot stop working to keep our day-to-day life going. And I think also with the higher concentration of people living together, because of the high cost of housing, two or even three-plus families are living together. These are all the issues that made social distancing so difficult. When we say that we are going through this storm together, yes, but we are not in this team boat. And we really need to make sure, as the county, it's the public safety net, we need to make sure that resources, whether it's masks, PPEs, and additional testings are freely available to everybody, documented or not, everybody should be able to get available testing, especially those in these very underrepresented area. And we are seeing that very clearly in the community. Poverty and inequity is something that has been existing for a long time. However, the COVID has definitely highlighted this problem, and we really need to work together as a county to direct those resources that we have, like I mentioned, all these companies, all these revenue, the money that we have in the county, to the most affected communities in order to get through with this. Thank you very much for this important questions.
Thank you. Two minutes, Mr. Chu?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate my opponent realized that we're not in the same boat, you know. This living in La Cruzbo, where people in the east side, where I lived for forty years, are still on the roller. Yes, right after that, you know, Councilmember Carrasco and I, we started Task Force, Health Equity Task Force. We worked on this issue for about eight weeks, and we have two other committee to address this issue, and we have came out with a recommendation. And I would really encourage you to take a look at those recommendations. And I have written a letter to my colleagues in the legislature and the governor regarding to some of the recommendation from this task force. And Councilmember Carrasco also presented this data or the findings to the county as well as the city, so, because two of the zip codes are in my Assembly District, two of them are in his Council District. I mean, this is, at the outbreak, what I was trying to encourage everybody to not just keeping the social distance and wash your hands, but wear a face mask. But during that time, because there's, the national stockpile was so low, we don't have enough PPE for the healthcare worker. So I was really kind of being quiet down to say, well, no, no, no face mask. I don't know if you remember, at that time, you say, no face mask, we need to save all the face mask, PPEs for the healthcare worker. But I took the initiative of donating five, five thousand face masks to the farmworkers which live in Morgan Hill Gilroy, and some of them live in the Half Moon Bay, trying to protect themselves. So it was, it's tough.
Thank you. We're going to move on to another topic, homelessness and the unhoused. And for that, we have another panelist who's going to join us right now, Celine Chandler. She is on the Home-Lived Experience Advisory Board for Destination Home, which consists of former and current unhoused individuals. And she's joining us to give us the next couple of questions, if we can get.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, I hear you, can't see you.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having me. My first question. Earlier this year, the Board of Supervisors endorsed the updated plan to end homelessness, which lays out a multi-pronged solutions-based approach for helping people in our community experiencing homelessness for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five timeframe. Within this multi-pronged approach, what are your priorities for action? And which policies and measures would you seek to advance? Do you have any additional new ideas you would like to see included as part of the county's approach to this issue?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and I attended a Zoom meeting this afternoon with Destination Home on talking about their plan. I will definitely subscribe to them because they emphasize on prevention. And this is really, I think, the biggest issue to me. We need to prevent those people from becoming homeless, because once you experience the homeless for one day or one week, you make, have scars in your mind that will be very, very challenging to be, to get rid of. So prevention is definitely very, very key to what we're trying to do of eliminating the homelessness issue. Again, this is an income equity issue. We need to, definitely something I have worked on for the last twenty years, trying to improve the salary or the pay for those lower-income workers. Addressing the income inequality will be number-one priority for me. And definitely prevention, we're talking about preservation, and the gentrification of the community is also a concern. And definitely production, production is really the key. We need to really have a, taking inventory at every government level of the usable land. And also, we should probably start the zoning or the paperwork, the process of getting the permit, as we are trying to raise the money to build on those available land. So it's a multiple-pronged approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Lloyd. I'm glad that somebody, Chu, has read the three-pronged, the protection for renters, preservation of existing affordable homes, production of more homes. Those are key issues that, as the at-home has listed on your website, and these are certainly really important points that we need to do. As, in terms of answering the question as to the multi-pronged priorities, prevention obviously is a very important part of the problem. But one of the biggest problem we have is really those who are sleeping on the streets. We have over two hundred and fifty people that died on our street in Santa Clara County this past year, almost one per night, okay? This is an urgency, and in terms of priority, that you asked me, what I want to do immediately is to make sure that that temporary housing is being provided as soon as possible. Whether we're talking about shelters, which are tiny homes, we talk about accessory dwelling units, or in that matter, how about even a container box, a forty-foot container box? I myself was deployed in Iraq, I mentioned earlier, I lived in one of those, not the whole box. I live in one-third of a forty-foot container box, divided into three, because this is how the US Army put the soldiers in a wartime environment. There's no luxury, obviously, but it's got a door that locks, it's got a window, it's got an AC unit, and I've got my privacy, and I lived there for one year. And this is certainly something that I would say it sure beats living by the creekside or underneath the highway, and it's something that can be done very, very quickly, because those units are very much available, like a module, like an order. The question, of course, is where to put them, right, is where the land's gonna be. One of the things, as we talked about this, as the county, we have the most ownership and control of land in the entire Santa Clara County. Certainly, the county has ways, and we are going to do the inventory of the available land that's owned by the county or controlled by the county, to make sure that we can make this happen. What is tiny homes, whether it's these container housing, we need those now. Thank you.
Thank you. And my second question is, a recent report from the Measure A Independent Oversight Committee found long delays for supportive housing developments funded by that measure. What would you do to streamline and expedite the process of building new affordable and supportive housing?
Thank you, Celine, for that question. When Measure A was passed, it was cheered as a very important nine hundred seventy million dollars, supported by voters, to build housing. A lot of people thought that would also work for homelessness and help the situation. Years has passed, and what we have seen is that the red tape of how long it would take to get approval from individual cities to get through has been ridiculously longer than what people had expected. There were a few so-called shuffle-ready projects, there was one in Cupertino that was able to build fairly quickly, that was the first project that money was being spent. Problem with it is, it was only nineteen units. So what we're seeing here is that it's taking a lot of times, a lot of money to build very few units. And also, the cost per unit, we're talking about upwards of six hundred fifty to seven fifty thousand dollars per unit. We gotta cut this red tape. It really shouldn't be that hard. Look, building, building homes, build is not that, this is not rocket science. We know how to do it, and I do really think that various cities need to work together to lower these type of ridiculous fees and requirements, because the need for affordable housing is so great right now that we don't have time to be debating the color of the building or where the, where the trellis should be. This is the time that we really need to build much higher density, I believe, higher density by the transit corridor in downtown. These are the ideas that is not new, but it's not been implemented for whatever reason. This is the time that we really need to put our act together. The money is not, like you said, the audit says that the money's often spent fast enough, and frankly, if people cannot build it quickly, let's get somebody else to do it. And we really have other ideas of public-private partnership that could do this, and I really hope that we put our heads together, senior housing, that's one thing that we haven't talked about, is something that I think the government has a huge role to play to make sure those are built. Thank you.
All right.
And thank you very much for the question, as serving as a full-time council member in San Jose, I know it is kind of a lengthy process to get a permit to build. That's why I answered part of your question in the previous question, that I think we should identify the law and start the process moving, instead of, you know, getting the money and then looking for the law. I definitely strongly opposing my opponents' idea of the county has a lot of land. Yes, we do have a lot of land, but they're usually in the open space area. And also, when we're talking about building a unit for the homelessness people, we need to scatter around in the county, you know. We do have a fairground, but no way we should turn the fairground into like a camp, like a homeless camp, because a lot of homeless people actually have to go to work during the day. So we need to spread it around and make sure that they are convenient for them to go to, go to work, instead of taking away our open space. And a lot of land are outside of the city boundary service area, then it's just not doing a service to the homeless people. So, yeah, definitely, we, we need to start, identify the land and start the process, and at the same time, going after some funding to build.
Thank you, Mr. Chu, Mr. Lee, and thank you, Celine, for.
Thank you, Celine.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so we're, people who have been watching this forum have been sending in questions, and we're gonna move to some of the questions that have been sent to us. And Mr. Chu, we'll start with you. This one is from one of our audience members, and it says, "I was on the North San Jose Task Force. We wanted to have a community center like other neighborhoods. Nothing has happened. Where do you stand on this, and where do you stand on development in North San Jose?"
Yeah, well, that's, thank you very much, whoever that is, I really appreciate you're serving on the North San Jose Task Force. We want a community center, we want a hospital, but I think the better we can get is the Agnew property. We join, partner with the Santa Clara Unified School District, and they will build elementary school and a high school there, and will hope be able to use their facility as a gathering place for the North San Jose resident. And the city is responsible to develop a park, and there's a joint agreement with the Santa Clara Santa Clara School District, and hopefully that will also provide places for our North San Jose residents to stroll on. And the fact that they opened up a northside library, I think it also served the North San Jose residents well. But this, I know, a hospital would be great, huh?
Thank you. Mr. Lee, one minute?
Yes, I certainly believe that community center is something that is very important in the neighborhood, and I'm sad to say that that's not one. And I'm sad to say that that's not one that's been created in the North San Jose area, especially when you see the population growth in this past five years. North San Jose has built a lot more housing than practically any other district in the city. This is a forum for the county. And I won't have jurisdiction in terms of San Jose City's concern, but I certainly do believe that the amenities for these new residents for North San Jose is long overdue. And so I certainly do support that idea. And if I were the county board supervisor, I would support creating any type of potential partnership with our city, of course, to make sure that our neighborhood is being properly taken care of. Because once you have a lot of people moving in, you need the community center. You need childcare facilities. You need a place for people to hang out and play and live and make a good place to live. So certainly supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another question from the audience. The Latino community needs to have a sense that you will represent their interests. What do you see as the highest needs? And what will you do to take on specific initiatives that will improve the situation for Latino families, especially those who are low to very low income? Mr. Lee?
Yes, and that's actually one of the reasons why Prop 16 that we mentioned earlier is so important. Because educational opportunity by far is the equalizer of our communities. And I think it is so important to make sure our neighborhoods and our schools, especially like we mentioned, those four zip codes in the east side, which is very heavily populated with a Latinx community, is going to not only survive COVID, but to strive and do much better. And I think it is so important for us to make sure that county resources and funding is being focused on the community and some of the nonprofit groups based in the community that's working with children, working with our seniors, to make sure that food is available and delivered to some of the senior families over there and for kids to have their school lunches. Because a lot of times people don't realize these food for seniors might be not just for one meal, but for many meals. I think we really need to focus on getting the resources to that area. Thank you.
Mr. Chu?
Yeah, well, that's definitely on different boat. You know, the issue is very close to my heart. Well, I want to make sure that they to be able to increase their compensation for whatever they are doing. And I was, when I was on the San Jose City Council, I championed the increase of minimum wage or prevailing wage in the city of San Jose. At that time was from eight something to $10 with a lot of pushback. Now you look back, you know, I wish I could have advocated for even higher pay. And the other challenge and challenge is the language accessibility. I have authored bills to make sure that important government documents, like the application for Cal Fresh, application for Cal Grant, or in multiple languages, so people can really take the advantage of many of our good programs. I know I will continue advocate that in the county.
Thank you. We'll move on to another question from the audience. In Los Angeles, the senior fare for taking the light rail is only 75 cents, while riding VTA light rail costs $2.50 and doesn't go very far. Will you commit to working towards lowering fares, Mr. Chu?
Definitely. I actually have a bill, I can find the bill number, to provide free ridership for senior. The senior fixed incomes are most vulnerable. And whatever break that we can give to them, you know, I was really worried about the rental situation during this pandemic. You know, I'm a strong supporter of rent control and the moratorium on eviction. And that's why I didn't get the, what's called realtors endorsement in order to like get the SBO's endorsement. They felt that they call me the biggest job killer. So definitely, this is a very important issue. After all, the VTA, only 6% of their revenue is from the fare box. So they need to really improve their operation and not to rely, they're not relying on the fare box returning anyway, so.
Mr. Lee? Sorry, Mr. Lee, I think you're muted.
All right, here, let's try again. Okay, hi. I don't really understand why we are charging seniors $2.50 per route. As a matter of fact, it's something that I had mentioned earlier. The ability to allow us to pack up the buses and VTA should be the priority to make sure that people are riding in public transportation because frankly, it's not working. What we need to do is make it as cheap and accessible, and especially for fixed-income seniors. They really should not, in my opinion, have to pay to ride the bus VTA. And this is not really a new idea. Many other cities have done it. Like the city of Denver has a free shuttle service right in downtown. And it's used by people a lot, and people don't bring their cars to downtown. This is a wonderful idea that's working in other places. And I think it's so much needed in San Jose and in our county right here in Santa Clara County. So I fully support waiving the fees for seniors.
Thank you. And we have, I believe, a final question from the audience. There has been recent initiatives to increase cooperation between different Bay Area counties to coordinate on housing and homelessness policy between Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. How will you work with other jurisdictions across the Bay Area to solve this regional challenge? Mr. Lee?
Yes, homeless issues is not a local issue. It really is a regional issue. And as much as, you know, even San Francisco, you can look at the situation there, Alameda. We certainly share many of the same problems. We certainly don't have the extent of the problem, probably as bad as San Francisco has been. But that doesn't mean that's not where we're heading, given the urban situation and the cost of housing and this inequality as we are experiencing today. Working with other counties, their supervisors and the leadership and other city officials is so crucial. I certainly object to any time when the city and county were fighting a lawsuit against each other. It doesn't make sense. I think that was what happened when Councilmember Chu was, someone Chu was on the city councils in San Jose, they have a fight with Santa Clara County. We absolutely need to work closely with city council colleagues to find solutions so that whether you're building tiny homes, for the container boxes, for temporary housing, this is the only way we could help solve our homeless problems. Thank you.
Chu, one minute.
This, a full disclosure, I identify with my supervisor. We have definitely some different way to solve the same problem. And we have to really sit down and collaborate and negotiate. When I was on the San Jose City Council, I also served on the ABAC, Association of Bay Area Government Board, and to address a lot of those regional issues. And as an assembly member, I serve two counties. I have the new work, half of the primo in my district. I have a wonderful, wonderful relationship with their elected officials and their community. So definitely, you know, I served on six years at the Transportation Assembly Transportation Committee. So I know what it takes to get things done. You know, I know what it takes to collaborate with other government agency to get things done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. That concludes all the questions from the audience. And that also concludes all the questions we have as well here. I'd like to thank both of you for joining us and having this lively discussion. These two candidates, Councilmember Chu and former Sunnyvale Mayor Otto Lee will be on your ballots for the District 3 seat for the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors in November. And we do have more time, just a minute each, for closing statements. Mr. Chu, if you get, we have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted to say that income inequality is in the front and center of my public services. You know, my wife, Daisy, and I lived in the east side for almost 40 years. And we raised our family here now to three generations, actually four generation family. And my 98-year-old mother. So a lot of the issues with senior care, IHSS workers versus, and childcare pre-K education is very, very close to important to me and is close to my heart. I've worked hard to increase more slots for a daycare center and also improve the quality of education for all students and in the district. And this is really an honor for me to serve the community, and I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, one minute.
Yes, thank you again for SV at Home and also YMB for hosting this wonderful forum so we could get to really detailed discussion on these homeless and housing affordability problems and plaguing us. And that's why those are two of my most important, along with healthcare, all top issues that I want to fight by becoming your next supervisor. I'm very honored, as I said earlier, to be supported by nurses, county firefighters, and our teachers in the east side as well. We really need to work hard to make sure that the equity issue is being addressed. I'm very strong on supporting hiring more mental health workers, social workers and counselors to solve the mental health issue that we have in our community. And that's the unity camp, as I said, being supported by the Democratic Party, SCIU, Labor, and even the SVO. It is important that we all work together because these problems, only by working the work together, we'll be able to solve them. And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you to everybody who joined. As a last couple notes here, make sure you get out there, get registered if you're not already. Get out there and vote. Early voting starts on October 5th and runs through November 3rd. And before we leave tonight, I'd like to thank all of our co-hosts, a long list of co-hosts and a very helpful list of co-hosts here. We have Charities Housing, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Home First, Asian Law Alliance, Catholic Charities, Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence, Abode Services, Destination Home, EAH Housing, First Community Housing in Mountain View in Sunnyvale, African-American Community Services Agency, Tech Equity Collaborative, Mid Penn Housing, also located in Mountain View in Sunnyvale, Momentum for Health, Amigos de Guadalupe, Asian Americans for Community Involvement, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, the Health Trust, the League of Women Voters of Santa Clara County, Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, Sacred Heart, Black Kitchen Leadership Cabinet, La Raza Roundtable de California, and South Bay YMB. So again, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to all our co-hosts and sponsors for tonight. And thank you, everybody, for joining us.